Good morning. I'd like to call the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee to order this morning. Let's start with introductions. I'm Senator Amy Volk from District 30, Scarborough, Durham and Buxton. Welcome, everybody.
Good morning. Erin Herbig of Belfast, Northport and Waldorf District 97.
Good morning. I'm Anne Marie Mistracchio. I represent House District 18, which is part of the city of Sanford.
Good morning. I'm Joel Stetkus. I represent District 105, which are the towns of Caney, Palmyra, St. Almond's Heartland, Ripley and Cambridge.
Hi there. I'm Dylan Bates. I represent District 35, which is Westbrook.
Good morning and welcome. My name is Paul Gilbert. I represent House District 74, the towns of Jay, Livmore Falls and Pabuk, Livmore.
Good morning. Welcome. I'm State Senator John Patrick from Monford. I represent 29 towns and townships in Westland and Northern Oxford County and the town of Livmore, Livmore Falls and Andrew Skoggin Town.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming today. I'm Representative Carl Wood. I represent House District 131, and those are the towns east of Bangor and Brewer from Otis all the way down to Stockton Springs.
Good morning. My name is Ryan Beckto. I represent District 11, which is part of Sanford.
Good morning and welcome. I'm Lawrence Lockman from Amherst. I represent House District 137, 15 towns and several townships and three counties, and it stretches from the Knobstunt Valley all the way to the Hancock and Washington County Highlands.
Thank you, committee. And we have Henry Fouts, our legal analyst, with us today, as well as Diane Stewart. Over here to my right is our committee clerk. Anyone who has brought testimony with them?
And I'm Jim Campbell.
Diane? Oh, I'm sorry.
I represented Act and Chapley. He'll make new feel in Boston's field.
Sorry about that, Representative Campbell. And I've heard from Senator Cushing. He's on his way. And actually, Representative Austin is here in the building somewhere. So just a little reminder, hadn't gotten to it yet, but please shut off electronic devices. There's a $5 fine for interrupting a public meeting.
Over the $5.
Yeah. Now, he introduced himself, right?
Yeah.
Good. So no eating or drinking, except for water, by members of the public in the committee room, please. And we're doing things a little bit differently today. We do want to remind people this can be an emotional issue, but we cannot have any outbursts such as applaud, applause, or booing. We just ask that you respect the committee process and control your behavior today in the room. Some of us might be coming and going today from the hearing, and it does not reflect a lack of interest in the subject matter. It's just that we may have other business that we have to attend to here in the State House. Let's see. So what we're going to be doing today is we're going to hear from all of our bill sponsors first. They're going to be introducing their bills, and they will have an unlimited amount of time to do so. We do request that you respect everyone's time this morning. And so if you could possibly limit your testimony to somewhere in the neighborhood of five minutes, that would be very much appreciated. If you have additional information, you know, obviously you can talk to us. But the order we'll be going in is right in order as it was advertised. So we will hear LD 36 by Representative Evangelos, LD 52 by Representative Martin. And I don't see Representative Martin, so Diane may want to...
It's right here.
Representative Martin.
Oh, he is.
The good Martin.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, that's right. Roland Martin. LD 72 by Representative Hammond, LD 77 by Senator Merriman, LD 92 by Representative Dylan Bates, right here in our committee, LD 487 by Representative Chipman, LD 739 by Senator Saviano, and LD 843 by Representative Melarano. I should probably have practiced how to say her name. How do you say that?
Melarano.
Melarano. Spanish, maybe?
No, that's Italian.
Okay. Representative Austin, would you like to introduce yourself?
I can't do it. I don't think I should. The staff is... Well, welcome, everyone. I'm Representative Sue Austin, and I cover my hometown of Gray, almost all of it, lots of Brandon, lots of Castle, and I do have all the finances.
And we do have Representative Evangelos here chomping at the bit to get started, but I neglected to say members of the public who are testifying will have a four-minute limit. So you are getting an extra one minute today because we do have a number of bills to address. And feel free to offer us additional information if you run out of time. We will allow the department, so followed by the bill sponsors. We're then going to allow the Department of Labor to come up and present their testimony. They will have an unlimited amount of time in the same way that the bill sponsors have had. And then after that, we'll begin the four-minute clock. So I hope everyone can understand and respect that process. So Representative Evangelos, welcome to the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee this morning. We will begin the hearing on LD 36, an Act to Increase the Minimum Wage.
Thank you, Senator Volk. Good morning. Good morning, Representative Herbig and other distinguished members of the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee. I am Representative Jeffrey Evangelos from Friendship, and I represent House District 91, and I am speaking today with the order of LD 36, an Act to Increase the Minimum Wage. Before I continue with my formal remarks, I wanted to endorse all of the sponsors that are coming behind me to improve our wages. I don't care which bill moves forward, as long as we meet a common goal. And I hope the committee can work to cobble together some kind of a bill and with compromises in mind, so we can get support from both sides of the aisle. One Republican House member suggested to me, just to throw out an idea, that he could support a minimum wage increase if the wage didn't go up so much for youth workers. That's an idea for you to consider. I guess it's important that we try to get a bipartisan report on the bill, so we can help some people. As the summary of the bill indicates, this bill raises the minimum wage to $9 per hour beginning this October, and to $10 per hour beginning October 1, 2016, and then provides after that, beginning October 1, 2017, subjecting the minimum wage to an annual cost of living increase. It would be a good idea, any of these bills we entertain, to adopt some kind of a cost of living, so we don't continually have to revisit this topic. This relatively modest proposal takes into account the concerns and interests of low-wage workers in Maine's small business community, which asks that the increases be graduated over time. The minimum wage in Maine currently stands at $7.50 an hour, having been last raised in 2008, a six-year period without a raise. Let's just take a moment and analyze a life operating under these circumstances. An adult earning $8 an hour at a 40-hour-a-week job, this is common in our state. This job nets this person approximately $1,200 per month after payroll deductions. Now, let's examine this worker's monthly expenses. Rent, $750, electricity, $100, heat, $150 per month. These are monthly expenses. Phone, $50, gasoline, $50, car insurance, $50, car expense, $50, tires and the like. That's $1,200. That's the income. Obviously, this person has a problem. His or her wages aren't high enough to sustain life. There is no money for food. There is no money for health or death and care. If the car has a serious breakdown, there is no money to repair it. There is no money for clothing or personal health and hygiene. And what about expenses if this person has children? Truly, this is not capitalism. It is feudalism with debt servitude as its companion, yet it is the reality faced by many Mainers today. The harsh circumstances highlighted above are the reasons why almost 30 states across the country have taken action to increase the minimum wage. Lawmakers in many of these states recently took action to address this pressing need to improve lives. Additionally, in 2014, voters in Alaska, Arkansas, Nebraska and South Dakota, all Republican-controlled states, approved minimum wage increases through the ballot box. After six years of gaming the welfare and food stamp system, employers such as Walmart, Target and Gap have announced increases in the minimum wage paid to their hundreds of thousands of workers. Trust me on this, they didn't do this out of generosity. As Walmart has stated, they did it because their same-store sales are way down, because people have no disposable income to spend at the stores. Our current minimum wage of $7.50 an hour amounts to corporate welfare. Why should government welfare supplant the responsibility of private enterprises to pay a livable wage? As 30 states have already demonstrated, this condition must change. Vermont has raised its minimum wage to $9.15 an hour and seen its unemployment rate drop from 9% to 5%. Some other states who have risen have seen similar circumstances. Vermont's minimum wage is scheduled to go up again this year to, I believe, $9.65. The reason for this is that raising the minimum wage is a win-win for workers and businesses alike. People have more money to spend, and businesses will experience increased sales. For capitalism to sustain itself, businesses must pay a livable wage. The father of capitalism was the economist Adam Smith, British economist, and he made this very point in his 1776 economic treatise, The Wealth of Nations, stating that workers provide labor to capitalists in order to attain a sustainable living. It's a virtuous servant. In closing, let's examine the words of President Roosevelt. "In my inaugural, I laid down the simple proposition that nobody is going to starve in this country. It seems to me to be equally plain that no business which depends for existence on paying less than living wages to its workers has any right to continue in this country. By business, I mean the whole of commerce as well as the whole of industry. By workers, I mean all workers, white collar class as well as the men in overalls. And by living wages, I mean more than a bare substance level. I mean the wages of a decent living." Franklin Roosevelt, June 16, 1933, his statement on the implementation of the National Recovery Act, which led to the eventual creation of the Fair Label Standard Act, which created the minimum wage as we know it. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative...
I have an attachment as well. I'm not going to go over that.
I was wondering if that came from you.
For your review.
Any questions from the committee? Senator Cushing, and you want to introduce yourself to anyone listening?
Thank you. I apologize for being a little tardy. I'm Andre Cushing. I'm the state senator for District 10, which encompasses 15 communities in Southern Penobscot County. Representative Evangelos, thanks for joining us today and bringing forward your perspective on what is a very popular issue this year. Just a couple of questions in regards to your testimony. You had indicated here in the fourth paragraph, analyzing a life operating today, an $8 an hour, 40-hour-a-week position with some costs. How did you come by the figures that you used, and is this based on somebody that you've actually spoken to, or a hypothetical situation?
No, just average, normal, everyday life experiences, talking to many people living. I mean, the average rent in the state is anywhere between $600 and $900 bucks. Most people's electric bill is $100 bucks. Gasoline, $50 a month, it's $10 a week, pretty modest. I didn't put anything in there for all of the things I listed below. No healthcare, no food. I mean, obviously, Senator Cushing, thank you for your question, but what's going on? And I know this for a fact, I've talked to people at work at Walmart. They take the folks into the Human Resources Department, and they tell them how to apply for food stamps, and they tell them how to game the welfare system because they're under pay. And this is why this person has a problem. We're forcing these people onto welfare. And I'm not making a remark about, you know, women in the workforce. I'm just going to talk about when I grew up as a boy. You know, the normal practice was the mom stayed home, took care of the kids, dad went to work, and everybody had a livable wage, and it was a one-income family. The moms have to go to work today. We have two people in the family working doesn't make ends meet. So we have fallen way behind on wages, and I just think that we need to make some adjustments. We can't, you know, the best path out of welfare is a good-paying job. And, you know, I'm all in favor of requiring people that are applying welfare to look for work, and maybe that's a good compromise as well. But we simply can't have adults work over eight months an hour. It's not sustainable. I think the statistics are modest, really.
Thank you. Just follow up a comment.
Sure.
I appreciate your, both your passion and your concern. You specifically called out a particular company. So you have spoken to approximately how many people who work for Walmart that have shared with you the information that they're being advised?
I've spoken to three people that work at Walmart. I also have read Walmart's inter-corporate documents. Last month, they had a discussion at the corporate level of Walmart. They made a statement, you can find this if you research it, that their same-store sales are way down. We have to address it. We're going to address it by improving the wages of the workers. We've got to put some money in people's pockets if we want the store sales to go up. You saw Gap stores did it, I think, in January. Car J did it last month.
That's your favorite designer store?
I don't do my own clothing jobs.
It's one of mine. Sorry, go ahead.
Just to clarify, so you've spoken to three individuals at the same Walmart facility, or is this...
Sure. Yeah, in my area, there's a huge Walmart where I live.
I understand that. And there's several of them around me.
Yeah.
The second question, I guess, relates to the internal documents you're talking about. Are these things that were publicly available, or have you gotten information from someone else that you could share?
No, they're publicly available. Walmart wants to cut me in on the inside, but I'm happy to receive it.
Thank you, Representative.
Representative Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Do you know how much legislators make an hour?
Yes. In fact, the state local government is hearing bills in that regard, but we make less than the minimum wage, obviously.
We make $14.66 an hour.
We do.
That's $7.16 over the minimum wage. So I think that any legislator that does not want to see it call it about $7.50, maybe they're willing to give up their medical insurance, and maybe they're willing to give up their pensions and willing to give up $7.16 an hour. Don't you think that's fair, Representative?
Well, of course not. I think that one reason why I'm here to raise the minimum wage, but I've seen the statistics on what legislators make. Just to comment, I spent probably 14 hours this weekend working at home on legislative business, and none of that gets factored into the published rate. But I'm not here today to talk about what legislators make. I'm here to talk about the general public. You know, where stock do we make if you vote for an increase for legislators? You know what happens.
Follow-up question?
Yes. What I'm asking you is, if legislators did believe that $7.50 is sufficient, I'm asking you, don't you think that they should drop back and take $7.50 an hour and give up their goodies? If they're so concerned about the state business paying a certain amount, don't you think that's fair?
I think the minimum wage is too low nationally and in the state of Maine. I'm not going to comment on the feelings of other legislators. I know how I plan on voting on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Representative Gilbert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative, do you know what the mean average wage is here in Maine?
Well, I've heard different statistics, anywhere from $15 to $21 an hour. But I'm suspect on the statistics we get in Maine, because I think the average wage in Maine is actually lower than it's published, because the statistics are skewed by the people at the high end. I mean, you throw a few millionaires in at the top and average that in, it really does skew the statistics. My own gut feeling is the average wage, when you count everybody, is probably about $12, $13 an hour. But the published statistics, depending upon which study you look at, have ranged anywhere from $15 to $22 an hour.
I was trying to get a, well, I'll tell you, if you're earning mean average, what would the, for a party hour a week, what would that be?
I've seen, the published studies I've seen are anywhere from $25,000 to $40,000 a year, which is, you know, $700, $800 bucks a week. I mean, this person I just illustrated is making $300 bucks, you know, $300 a week. Eight bucks an hour, 40 hours a week is $320, and then you've got to pay your social security. Can't live on it. We all know that. I talk to the people in my area in their convenience stores. I ask the adults that are our age what they make all the time, and they all tell me the same thing. They're making $8, $8.25 or $8.50, and they've been there for 10 years. They get no benefits.
I would suggest that probably somebody from the Department of Labor will have that information or will be able to get it for us. I think we should be expecting bill sponsors to have that kind of info at their fingertips. Representative, and go ahead and introduce yourself, Ward, and then Representative Mistracchio.
Thank you for coming here today. I'm curious, what percentage of the people here in the state, I mean, would you estimate, Representative, are working with the minimum wage?
Well, I have read statistics, which I don't believe, that 3% of the people make $7.50. But what we need to talk about is what percentage of the people are making less than $10 an hour, and that is a significant percentage of people.
Representative Mistracchio?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to clear up what Representative Campbell was really saying, and he's right, because on our pay stubs, it says we're making almost $15 an hour, but that's for half the year. And if we extrapolate it out, we are making minimum wage for what we do here. It would be about $30,000 if we would be working for a whole year. So they just factor that into the half a year. So in fact, it is a minimum wage that we are making, but it's just that we make it all in six months or in the next, in the four months. So, you know, and we've heard that you can't do this job. If we took the $15,000 that we made and you try to spread that out over the year and do that, you know what it pays for. I mean, we have experienced with that. So thank you for bringing this bill forward.
Thank you, Representative.
Any other questions from the committee before we move on to our next sponsor? Representative Lockman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of order. I have a feeling this is going to be a long day, and members of the committee will be on asking clarifying questions. Thank you.
Let's try to keep it to questions. Thank you. I think...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next presenter is Representative Martin in LD 52, an Act to Adjust Maine's Minimum Wage. Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Senator Volk, Representative Herbig and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development. I am Representative Danny Martin, not John Martin, representing House District 150. John, however, represents the adjoining House District. I understand that you'll be hearing several bills this morning relative to increasing or adjusting Maine's minimum wage, and with this in mind, I'll keep my testimony very brief.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. LD 52 would increase Maine's minimum wage from $7.50 to $9.50 effective October 1 of this year. Allow me to read off a few bullets that I'm sure most of you are very familiar with. Our minimum wage, as you all know, was increased in 2009 at the rate of $7.50 and has not been adjusted since that date. Increase of the minimum wage is favored, according to a recent poll commissioned by the Portland Press Herald. 60% strongly favor, while 15% favor somewhat. In Maine, 6 in 10 minimum wage earners are women. In over 60% of the women over the age of 25 earning minimum wage do not have a spouse's income to supplement their own. 20 states, as you all know, have increased their minimum wage effective January 1 of this year. In our second congressional district up in northern Maine, 60,000 workers are paid the minimum wage. I think the time is right to support our Maine's workers. I thank you for this opportunity to sponsor LD 52 and urge your support. I'd be happy to answer or attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Representative Martin. Any questions from the committee for Representative Martin? Senator Cushing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Martin, thanks for joining us this morning. Could you give me the source of some of the points you have here, particularly you talk about the number of people in the second congressional district who are on minimum wage, and also the numbers related to women who are on minimum wage?
These are all from publications, and I'll be more than happy to present that information to your committee clerk.
I appreciate that.
If it's possible. Thank you, Senator. In response to Representative, my good friend Representative Campbell's remarks regarding salaries for legislators, my state and local government committees this afternoon will be holding a work session in regards to the governor's pay and salaries paid, and you're all welcome to come attend that.
Any other questions for Representative Martin? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
I'll see you at the work session.
Great.
Okay. Next, we'd like to welcome former member of this committee, Representative Scott Hammond in Act to Increase the Minimum Wage, LD 72. I noticed he was carrying a bag with him. It's entirely appropriate as a former member. I think he just went to the other side of the wall. Now serving on Health and Human Services. Ooh. You're a deli.
Proper good stuff.
Oh, thank you.
This is special stash, just for chairs.
All right. Wow. This is for the ladies.
You know how to suck it. I love blow.
So, you know, totally. I know, is this bribery?
Here's Senator Patrick. Where are you? We came down a little.
So for anyone listening or anyone in the room that's unaware, it's a custom in the Labor, Commerce, Research and Economic Development Committee, I think it goes back to the Labor Committee.
All committees.
All committees, oh, okay. I've only been on this committee, so. That if you are a former member of the committee, you have to bring a tribute, which is traditionally something sweet, and we always appreciate, particularly when it's good stuff. With my apologies to Hershey's. And Representative Hammond was with us in the 126th legislature, I believe, and now serving on Health and Human Services.
That is correct.
You're ready.
Senator Volk, Representative Herbig, members of the Yelcray Committee, my name is Scott Hammond. I represent District 32, which includes portions of South Portland and Kew, Lisbon. I'm here to present LD 72, which gives minimum wage earners pay raises and then indexes it to inflation. It's been over a half a decade since the last minimum wage increase in Maine, so it's long overdue. Right now, a full-time minimum wage worker makes just $15,600 per year. These families are struggling to get by, too often reliant on social services and the goodwill of charitable organizations to survive, despite their participation in our labor force. $15,600 is below the poverty line for a single mom. No one who works full-time should have to raise a family living in poverty. We should reward work by raising Maine's minimum wage and then index it to inflation. This would directly boost wages for thousands of workers, reduce poverty and reduce inequality. Stronger middle class will strengthen our economy. A range of economic studies show that raising the minimum wage increases earnings and reduces poverty without jeopardizing employment. In fact, these studies show that increasing our worker productivity and the purchasing power for consumers will also help our overall economy. It will help parents make ends meet. Around 55% of workers benefiting from a higher minimum wage are women, less than 15% are teenagers. Also, those workers who would benefit from the increase in the minimum wage bring home 46% of their household's total wage and salary income. These factors show that raising the minimum wage directly helps parents make ends meet and supports their families. Raising the minimum wage closer to a living wage is an important step, but just as important is to index this wage to inflation. LD 72 also provides for an annual cost of living increase, so that the buying power of minimum wage paychecks keeps pace with the reality of making ends meet. Putting food on the table, putting gas in the tank to get to work and heating your home and litter. Imagine living on a paycheck already too low to survive, and then the cost of everything you have to buy in order to support your family goes up. You have nowhere to go. Indexing to CPI will ensure regular and modest increases in the minimum wage, take the debate out of the political sphere, and assure minimum wage workers that as the cost of a loaf of bread increases, so too will the paycheck. Maine's economy is improving. We're on the other side of the recession. Yet, a minimum wage worker, minimum wage earner made $7.50 an hour in 2009, and a minimum wage earner still makes $7.50 an hour in 2015, over a half a decade later. It's time to give our low-wage workers a raise. It's the right thing to do morally, and addressing systemic inequality will have a positive uplifting effect on our economy.
Thank you, Representative. Any questions? Representative Lockman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Representative Gilbert, for coming here today.
It's good to see my form is secret.
Yes. In your testimony, you state that it is the right thing to do morally to pass this. So I'd like to ask you, aren't you concerned that turning a policy disagreement between you and I into a moral issue and implying that people on the other side are somehow deficient morally? Aren't you concerned that that may not be in the best interest of promoting a robust dialogue here?
I don't know that it's saying that the employers are deficient morally. I think that employers are acting within context of law, and if the law allows them to pay a wage that's below poverty wage, so 70% still qualifies for food scams and social services, despite working full-time. I don't know if that's necessarily a moral deficiency on the part of the employer. I think as far as government's concerned, I think it's more of a fact to assure that somebody who works full-time isn't looking to profit.
Representative Gilbert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative, you refer to full-time, is that forty hours a week?
Yes.
So, a person working full-time, seven fifty an hour, the mostly can expect to make is fifteen thousand, six hundred, unless they work some overtime. Is that right?
That's correct.
And I asked a question a few minutes ago about the mean average wage in Maine, I believe. I may be wrong, but I think it's about seven hundred and fifty dollars a week. So, a minimum wage earner would have to work more than, more than a hundred hours a week to make the mean average?
I'd have to do the math, but those types of numbers seem accurate.
I can't see anybody working a hundred hours.
Representative Mistracchia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to clarify, does that, that figure of fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars a year for forty hours of work, that most often doesn't include any kind of benefits, healthcare, sick leave, anything like that, correct?
I didn't, I didn't put that into my analysis, but...
It would be great if we could have that. I would really, for the work session, would really like to have some data around whether or not the benefits that a salaried worker get, or a union worker might get, that would, how much is benefits, and if they offer benefits, such as, let's use Walmart since that's been brought up today, if you could find out before their minimum wage, I mean, I think that they did increase it, but what exactly a percentage, that information is readily available, what's the percentage of healthcare that the company pays, and if they expect their employees to pay out of that minimum wage salary?
Absolutely, thank you. I didn't put that into my analysis, because it wasn't specifically within the context of my bill, but I could definitely look into it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Representative Steves?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Representative Ford. In your, it seems like you put a lot of time into this, which is, I believe, what we're supposed to be doing here. In your, in your analysis, did you run across any numbers as far as the job loss statistics that we will see here in the state of Maine?
I think it's probably impossible to project if there would be a job loss. I know that we've seen that of all the states that have increased their minimum wage recently over the past several years, they've actually seen employment increase.
A follow-up, Representative Steves?
Thank you. I would, I would direct you to the CBO report under the Obama administration. When they, when they did their, their report on the ten, ten-an-hour wage increase, they, they estimated between a half a million to a million job losses, and seventy percent of those are, are low-income or below the poverty line employees. So, my question to you would, how would that affect you pursuing this type of legislation if you were to understand that this could very possibly do more harm than good?
Thank you. I am familiar with the Congressional Budget Office report you're talking about. They said, I believe they said up to five hundred thousand jobs, but could, could potentially be lost, but that would be outweighed by the positive effect on the economy if people had more money in their pocket, so it would be a net gain overall.
Perhaps that's, we could get a copy of that report for the work session. Oh, he's got it. All right, we're all set. Well-prepared. Thank you. Any other questions from the committee today? Representative Hammond, we do have another bill coming up.
Thank you. I apologize, I had a poll to help it and get to anybody.
Well, we'll be glad to hear. Thank you for the chocolate.
Thank you.
Okay. LD seventy-seven, an act to raise the minimum wage. Senator Miramont?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning, Senator Volk, Representative Herbig, members of the committee. This is so great, Pam. So many bills. When I put mine in, it was early, and the advisors don't tell you, there are others, to make sure one was there, and then to find out that there were a bunch with different perspectives, made me keep my testimony short.
Awesome.
And hopefully different than others, but I see it overlapped a little bit. Because we failed to tie the minimum wage to the Consumer Price Index, or some reliable method of indexing it to inflation, workers are being left behind in this state and many others. The jobs that were supposed to be entry-level and only short-term have become an ongoing reality for far too many workers in our hobbled economy. Also, with my testimony, I included a sheet that will be coming around, from the Department of Labor, U.S. Department of Labor, there's some, they call them this, they're questions that they've looked into and answered, and there's a bunch. Even as the economy has begun to rebound, Maine has been trailing in creating good-paying jobs that would help our workers move out of the minimum wage positions they've been stuck in for years. Since Maine has mostly small businesses, in many cases, the owners know and care about their workers, and are paying more than the seven fifty per hour state minimum wage. Unfortunately, there are other large retailers who are making plenty of money off the people of this state, and instead of paying more than the minimum, counsel their workers in how to apply for benefits they can get because their wages are so low. I share the district with Representative Evangelos, but I don't think it's just one store, but he said he's looking into it. When I look back at the value of the minimum wage, it hit an all-time high just as I was starting to work in nineteen sixty-nine. The minimum wage was a dollar sixty per hour, but that gave me the equivalent of a ten-dollar and nineteen-cent wage in twenty fifteen dollars. This is why we're able to start a large middle class through this period, we've been falling behind ever since. While my bill does not have steps, this is a fair starting point, and I believe linking the minimum wage to the Consumer Price Index will help us keep pace with inflation and avoid falling behind again. That's an amendment I'd like to encourage, but I also knew...